So now, we're on episode 4. Thicker than water. When community is threatened from within, Javier manages unlikely alliances for the safety of his loved ones. Sounds like it's gonna be a good episode. Constora is... Remember an older couple from India and wife is working a door? Oh, cool! So I'm guessing you had a good chit chat then, Bane? Okay, episode 4. I'm nervous, I'm excited! It feels like it should be ending soon, but... Can't believe they stole her child. Oh, and they hadn't eaten the kid apparently, Bane. Apparently the kid's alive. Course that's the same time. Course she did. Be rude, not who. Once again, David with the eyes. This Joan is one cold-hearted bitch. Like, I get it why she's doing all this, but it's, oh, it's cold. And very power-hungry, exactly, Phoenix. Guessing another flashback? Definitely a flashback. There's not enough terror on these people's faces. Ooh, a moka, nice fox, enjoy! Oh, Javi and David. Bravely bonding! Takes two seconds, what, be polite? Oh wow! Come on! You could've just said, "Oh, it's like..." "It'll be for my dad or something like that." You could've just went, "Please don't personalize it." "Can I just have a sign?" You know? Oh, oh, crush it! Oh, come on, David! Not that David acts like this all the time! Yeah, well, that's you, David. I'm gonna let him crush it every time! Oh, so you, it's okay? So it's okay for David, brag, but no for anyone else? Still gonna crush it. Exactly. Mature. I'm just gonna keep quiet. Can't be off this happening, arguing with him. But whatever you say, he's gonna go off it, so... I won't fix anything. Probably 'cause your nostril.
No, the kids are too young for you to leave them. You gotta be around the, you know, coach them on stuff. What the hell do you know about raising children? I'm not gonna lie. If I go, it's gonna be hard on everyone. Kate may need help from time to time. You can help, right?
So wait.
You won't leave her hanging?
Wait, 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 wait! So David was gonna rejoin the army, leave his family, stay married to Kate, though, so she'd look after his kids, and then expect his brother to help her look after his kids. And then, every time he sees Javi, he's like, "You, you, you..." "You don't understand responsibility." And... But we've only ever seen Javi, yeah. Da- David, there's a lot of impact with David. Like, obviously, there's a lot going on, you need to deal with, like, he's been in the army for, there's probably army trauma, mental health. There's a lot of stuff what's probably to do with his profession, being in the army and stuff like that. But his actions, like, yeah, there's trauma, and that's the reason for his actions, but... He needs to be held accountable. You can't run away from your kids and just dump them on people, and be like, "Oh, this makes it better." Like, look inside yourself. Man, am I right? Totally, Mikey. You are absolutely right. Okay. This, eh, he needs a lot of help. And I definitely see that, like, this is what I'm training to do. But also, he's just riling me up the wrong way, and he's a video game character, so I will allow that to round me up the wrong way, but... He's just gonna leave his kids, like, like... Nico, I'm not, Javi is not responsible at all. Javi's just looked after your kids like all apocalypse. He ends up doing all that, like, ugh. Yeah, exactly, Phoenix. Selfish? David, pot kettle black. That's what I'm hearing, like... Just a bit hypocritical. Evy, welcome in! Same fox. She won't order, but she can use us for people for her. It's not really gonna keep it safe if you're attacking everyone. I don't like this process. Like you say, they just killed Mariana, an act, like, innocent girl. Exactly. Really? Stop sulking. Yeah, friends, my start for Javi. Then don't give up now! Your life's not wrong. Go on then, David.
Just like pitches, right, Javi? Exactly like pitches.
Then why bring the guns? I'm just not saying anything. David's butt for the bullets. Guessing, Evy, you're not a fan of David either?
I know the laws, Joan. You're the one breaking them. This place could've been something. Something good. And you ruined it.
Santia talking good. No one is. David is very exhausting. Good point, Mikey. However, this is a zombie apocalypse, so... Sky with Bonn and Ben! Hi, Rumble! Yeah, I think actually today might be a case of shoot them all. For once, Rumble. Cause, eh, they're not good people here. Pew pew, even Phoenix is agreeing, "Not good people here," pew pew. How you doing, Rumble? Imprem, welcome back, how are you doing? Ooh, it's a sink! Theme wants viol- yeah, theme wants the violence. That's how you can tell we're not in a good situation. When Phoenix is like, "Yeah, violence is the answer here." Okay, Brill. Got a look at the lamp? Could use it, could use throw at something. Anything else? Ooh, and it's open. They're all cabbages! Damn the cabbages! Ooh, and let's stand on this. You could if you tried. Yeah. Unfortunately, zombie apocalypse, I don't think people who were probably previously couns- counselors probably kept at it. I don't know, I'd like to think our movies would, if a zombie apocalypse happened, but a doubt were. Okay. Can there be like another sign that says exit somewhere? Ooh, can we move this? Or this? No. Ooh, events. Where's Kate? No idea. She ran away! So we have no idea where she is, Prem. She could be anywhere. And everywhere. All at once. And Gabe didn't wanna leave his dad. Can we not get up? Window! Yeah, we could. Totally. So how we get up there?
Do those boards come loose?
Ooh! Don't know! Let's try! Don't really care about Gabe! Oh, Prem. You make me laugh. Any boards, anything? Ooh, there was a chair back here, wasn't there? Yes, give us a chair. Is Ben version 2? Your hatred of Ben, Prem. I just don't understand it! You'll nearly like talk us all through it one day, video essay style, so we can understand. How did it all begin? Ooh! Do you think anyone heard? Right, when I stream this game, I can't wait for you to stream this, Prem. I need a, no, I need answers. Kate! It was a sign! Yeah, let's go, this is not gonna make any noise, no one will find out. Is it bad that I don't see Javi and Kate as romantically linked? Like, I get the game keeps on pointing at that, that there's a romance between them, but I just don't see it. I feel like they're more like best friends than anything. Like soulmates, but on like a best friend level, not a romantic level. Need to better job, yeah. Neither, but we are. Yeah, we are, Ace Fox, that's good thing. Thing is, I do see, I do experience romantic attraction. But I just don't feel it for these two. Makes sense, cause he's my man, see? Fair enough, Rumble, this is your guy. See, I didn't even feel like I saw it in the beginning, Phoenix. I just saw them as like really good friends, like more brother sister, to be fair. Like two cool friends who have come through, yeah, exactly, like, just like best friends, soulmates. Not romantic or any, any shit like that, just, they are each other's person. Yeah, I didn't wanna kiss her, but I didn't feel it. Yeah, don't think about it. Two versus, eh, tou- Mikey. Nah. Not like that. So I don't get like why bros do that, have seen guys do that, and it's like... Weird. Nah. Just not appropriate, though. Do you not remember that vine? I've never seen that vine. I will be con- also, Mikey, I wasn't sure if it was like a joke or not, myself. Cause it's, I'm presuming it was, cause I do know you, but with those type of jokes, just cause not everyone knows intentions behind the words, right? Um, and also, you know what I'm like with memes, they go over my head. Um, so yeah. But I know you, you probably didn't mean it like that. But just in case. Thanks, Prem. It's a rare meme I know. Oh my god, Rumble, you know it? Rumble, I thought you were like me! I thought we were both not getting memes! I thought that was the point in us. Being friends, we're both like joint in the whole not understanding them. You betrayed me, Rumble. How could you, Rumble? Enjoy your luck, Prem! I thought it was okay by inside. I didn't know it, so like, honestly. Um, like, for you guys who did know it, like, I'm glad it didn't come across like that. But like I say, like, everyone just be careful, cause sometimes like might get people who like me, or other people who don't know and think, you got ill intentions when you don't, there's a vine. And that. Anyway, Mikey, how was your salmon the other day? I forgot to ask, the one with no hair spray on. Or hair shampoo. Rumble's only Captain America, eh, I got reference. Rumble's gonna be telling us all to stop swearing soon. Without knowing it, in the context, people can use it, yeah. Cup of tea is so hot. Nah, turns out coconut shampoo doesn't make salmon better, that is such a shame. Mikey, you're gonna have to report this to Bane and Katie, cause you know, the whole making a food shampoo cookbook now, so... Yeah. Oh yeah, Phoenix, um, Mikey on Monday, eh, Nigel's stream was cooking salmon and accidentally put coconut shampoo on instead of coconut oil. So, yeah, don't put shampoo on your food, folks. Apparently it doesn't make it taste better, despite it smelling nice. Town meeting at dawn. Cookbooks are making thousands, I mean, Bane, if anyone could do it, you and, you and Katie could. Basically, the fry light bottle looked exactly the same as my daughter's. Oh, why do they put them in similar shaped bottles? Just makes it more confusing. What did you hear? Oh, Katie and, eh, Bane are releasing a cookbook for you to use shampoo with. It's gonna be a hit when the apocalypse hits. They're, they're, they're doing it in preparation for the apocalypse, cause like we'll eat all this food quite quick, so we might as well start ingesting it. Cause they want people like me to struggle basic life skills. It's a personal attack, Mikey, I get it. Oh, no! It's great to see ya! Gabe came back! Them two! Welcome back from your luck, Prem! And that, Joan locked us up. Sorry. Love you two, Noble, look after yourselves, okay? And I'm here, you need to talk. Let's figure out how. Ooh, salmon and pasta, always nice, Mikey. Evy has a point, dude! Oh god, I wish this cup of tea would cool down just a wee bit. I wanna enjoy my tea! Ooh! That's not sheep! To the sewers! All those friends, yeah! Look out the window, the window covered in blinds. What, do you mean you can't see through blinds, one, Rumble? Rings! Really? Can't talk our way out. If you floss dance, they might cringe in your room. Could do, could do. Okay, Gabe, you're useful. We splitting up again? Yeah, friends! She's your sister, dude! No! That's fair. Not my business. Sorry for the box, guys. My dad's coming in. And the dogs get excited. Right, yeah, you give it time. Is it a wonder stream my dogs aren't barking at one point? That, or just accept it's a friendship trip? Either or, but don't push it. There's barking, there is. Trip, if Eleanor says she just wants to be friends, just accept it. Bark add vibes, oh, thank you guys! Always go get worried, it like puts people off. But they're Jack Russells, like, they're gonna, they always bark, like, no matter what. Sneaky snakes! Look at this sneaking around. The people in the mob, Bane! Don't be suspicious, yeah, it's just you them. Be careful, kid. Don't be suspicious, don't be suspicious, dun 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 dun. Oh crap, I need to update the gnomes. Smart. Just running screaming, "You can't see me!" Exactly. No problem at all, Prem. Hey, Lucy, how you doing? I'm doing alright. Well, I have so four of The Walking Dead season three. We're like flying through the season and it's so good. But very tense. And to be fair, this series, actually all three seasons of this game, every decision just makes you feel like a bad person cuz they just give you two bad decisions and you're fucked either way. Okay, Gabe actually had a good idea. Open sesame. God, look, he did. That kid has some luck. More luck than Ben did, cuz we all know what happened to Ben. Still too hot, I think I burnt my tongue. Who's this? It was good? What do you mean it was good, Prem? Ben wasn't a liability, he was a kid. He was a kid who lost everyone. He was like alone. People handle it differently, Prem. You can't hate on the kid forever. Don't be suspicious, don't be suspicious. Cuz they're definitely not gonna notice we nickel load their guns. It's locked, like, are they shocked? Are they shocked that a gun room's locked? Just the children to your doom. Like, they might think, there's more sneaky sneaky in this season than there has been the past two seasons, for sure. Okay. Beef. They'll definitely know no one was here. I mean, I say there was more sneaky, we've literally just busted the door open, making loads of noise, but it's fine. We're still sneaky. No noise at all, Prem. Don't know what you mean. Um, why are we letting the kid have an assault rifle? Can we not give the kids just like the ammu- ammunition instead and we'll take the assault, uh, rifle? Of course, he wants the bat. Ben too put that down. Oh, Prem, you make me laugh. Okay. I'm just nicking everything? Hey, wait a minute. Where's Clem? Not done yet. Oh, yeah, we do. Bye, Phoenix. Getting guns? Duh. Bane, thank you for the mods. If anyone doesn't hold any of the mods, please do, cuz they are phenomenal. Ooh, we got a friend. Maybe she has the baby, if she's not eating the baby. To be fair, they said the baby's alive. I'm still convinced someone's eating the baby. Until I see that baby, I'm convinced someone's eating the baby. What, Phoenix, it's a good, like, you know, we're in zombie apocalypse here. You sure, Prem? You a hundred percent sure? Cuz I've not seen this child anymore. Hold your breath, don't breathe. Pray they don't see you. Oh, shit. Who's this? Gabe, Gabe, what are you doing? Oh, no. We've got a knife in her shoulder that would hurt. Don't worry, kid. We'll walk it off. I won't tell you how the baby is, but I'm pretty sure she knows what's eating him. You sure? Probably not. Sleeping beauty. Just a tad bit quickly, didn't it, Bane? Never know, he might even be a friend. Rub some dirt in it, yeah. That's definitely the best way to deal with a stab wound. Just rub dirt in it. Go and see Eleanor? Really? Just a scratch. It doesn't look that serious, right? Wait, wait, why are we leaving, why are we leaving the knife in the pool of blood? Like, we've just heard a body in the closet. People are probably gonna add it. They'll help. I'll false off. It's the flesh wound, exactly. Laser sights, what the heck? Clem! Just we start. Someone spilled a jam, don't talk about it. Not the jam. Anything but the strawberry jam. Who did you expect?
Something tells me Lingard doesn't care what you're doing. He's alive. Poor dumb bastard.
He's bloody snoring! Go for it. She did it last season. She actually has over a hundred.
I'm fine.
Clem?
I started bleeding. I know, it's a thing. I've travelled with women before and, and they all had it. What is it? I mean, like, why is it?
Shit.
Don't understand.
It's totally normal. I, I mean, it's something female women have. It's, uh, what's next? It's not fun, I know that, but Cape manages. You, you'll be fine, too.
I mean. It's kinda cool that they've included periods in this.
It's supposed to happen. You'll be fine, Clem, I, I promise.
Yes, let's do it. Talk about periods. It's important.
She can help you with, uh.
Yeah, you're kind of bleeding in a way where it's not. Normal. I mean, good on Clem just asking it, though, like, and honestly, anyone should be able to answer the question. Cuz, you know, it's not just women who have periods. Just saying. Many people, non-binary people, trans people, other people have periods other than women. Everyone should be able to answer the question. Everyone should be able to help someone if they're having a period. It's very important. Do you know what I mean? Like, I've seen like these TikTok things where. Um, like, they'll have, like, a, a young girl walk around, like, just to see, like, if people would actually, like, stop and be like, just like, you know, you've came on your period, like. So they've put like a red stain on their trousers or something like that. And the amount of people you see just walk by, and it's not until, like, like. It's normally other people probably have periods come up and they're like, oh, do you know you've started your period? Like, wrap your shirt, like, and like, try and come together, like, everyone should talk about it. Everyone should know about periods, like, do you know what I mean? It's very important. And it's nice to see it in a fricking video game. I didn't, do you know what? One thing I didn't expect to happen in The Walking Dead. I did not have periods occurring, but I bloody love it. Go for it. Granted, I've not had one in a very, very long time, but still, love it. Um, so there we are. Um, for a storyteller game, but it turns out it's a hit period. Mikey, I'll let you off that cuz that's actually. That's a bit funny, Mikey, actually, I'll let that. Agreed, see? Also, Lucy, how's your day been? Uh, as I've seen Clem grow up, exactly, like, we saw her at eight years old. We saw her at eight years old. Oh, I bloody, oh, did I say I bloody love it as well? I love it when I come out with my own puns and not even realise. That went over my own head and it came out of my mouth. But it's, oh, it's so powerful. I always think about period logistics and popular games. Do you know what? I just never thought of it, cuz I, I think I always thought, like, with, um, like, the apocalypse or zombie apocalypse, I always figured maybe it's like. People will be like that malnourished, that those who had periods probably would stop having them, but that's not always the case, is it? So, yeah. Nah, periods are dirty, it'll secrete, you know, I was discussed outside the period club, you don't even talk about period club. This isn't Fight Club, Evy, you got confused. Fight Club, yes, there's blood, but it's not period club. They're not exclusive. Such a normal thing in life, but it's like, oh, yeah, exactly, like. I remember, like, at school, like, just being like, hey, can I go to the loon? Teacher's like, you should have went beforehand. And I'm like, I'm really sorry. I don't get control over the blood flowing out of me and I don't really get to decide when I start a period. So can I go so I can sort myself out, please, and we stop having this discussion? Like, you know? Like, oh, it's so mad, but it's important. It should be, it should be there. It should, like, appear in games and books and. So even then, I don't think it appears a lot in books, which is quite disappointing, cuz it's something that happens all the time. Like, it's there, it's occurring. Remember watching Red and Hunger Games as a kid, I mean, like, what, what happened when a period? Yeah, exactly. That's a good point, Fox. That's a good point. Actually, I had a guy friend approach me the other day, he's like, I don't wanna sound like a creep, but I would like to know more about periods from a woman's perspective, would you mind answering some questions? And I'm so scared to ask, cuz, yeah, do you know what guys should know? Like, what is wrong with them knowing? I'm really sorry, like. You came out of vagina, of vagina, like, it's nothing scary. Like, you ca- everyone's coming out with one. That's where the blood comes from, that's where the period is. It's nothing scary. I don't, I don't get why anxiety is like weird on some things like this. It's like, come on, it's normal. It, it just happened, you don't get control over it. Per Clem. Vaginas are terrifying. Fair enough, Ivy. In Gamesbook, I mentioned laser hemorrhage, well, yeah. Yeah, smooth legs. Everyone requires smooth legs, not like. Periods, when you're trying to survive against little people in the arena, where you're fighting to the death. It's about the smooth legs. That's the priorities, Evy. Wake up, mate. Wake up! Can't feel a thing. Yeah, why is period gross, but if you bleed from anywhere else, it's insensory? That's also a very, another good point, Fox. Literally hitting the nail on the head right there. Looks very pale. Do you think he might have? I'm hoping he hasn't, uh, took too much. Or maybe he's been given too much by Joan? Let's just take the pills. We're gonna be leaving here at some point. All he had been taught his whole life was blood and cramps. Yeah, there's a lot of other symptoms in that. Okay. Clem? Oh, she obviously hit Clem.
Doctor Lingard? Doctor Lingard?
Hello?
Doctor Lingard? Can you hear me?
You awake?
Does he look like he can hear you?
Okay. Think I remember, so reassuring. Now it's all about the star, but, cuz I was bad, but, yeah. Like, periods and like, the thing is, the idea is like contraception and going on it a lot. People I know who've been on contraception. It's because of like how heavy and painful their periods can be. Not for like actual contraception. Rumble, your boyfriend's topless. Bless her. A good friend of yours, uh, period superior, if you will, and period needs something, he would always help. Oh, I love that. He comes for a bad move, he carry you to, um, bed recently. Doesn't have the equipment, doesn't that mean can't be supportive? I love that, Bane. That is a good friend. Or even just the ones who like join and scarab you some chocolate. Like, I know it doesn't do anything, really, but like, just when they try. Not, not, I've noticed I'm not mad about it. Have you got it on pottles, Rumble? You got it on pottles on like another screen, you're getting a good screenshot. Or is this after they took AJ from her? Yeah, make your own decisions. Like. Why does everyone wanna get into everyone else's reproductive health? It's a health, it's a bit creepy. Oh, I like this Ava now, I think. I don't know. I think I do. She seems cool. You got the kid? Needs me. I want, I miss that dude. I didn't even know this dude by mistake, Bane. Can you just hand the bag and stuff from the bag on the floor? Energy bars? Food? Water? Brother got me a baby Yoda hot water bottle for the, uh, Christmas. I call it my hot Yoda bottle. Oh, I love that for you, Evy. That's so cute. Uh, where's the male pillow? It makes more sense. I'm not gonna read that out, just, not, not cuz I say you're wrong with it, Mikey, I just feel like I can't say that sentence, but I do agree with you, like. There should be better contraception as well and more widely available. You, you have a good point, Mikey. Um, yeah, soon, hopefully, because even though I'm on, uh, T, consider fight, yeah. I can come up with something to stand that, Fox, it must be really, like, hard, like, I can't imagine what that'd be like for you and stuff. But I hope you're able to, like, get that and get that medical care box. So many people are trying to, like, stop people. From, like, having their own choice, and do you know what? Let's just respect everyone else's choices. If you want kids, that's fine. If you just want a life of periods, that's fine. If you, um, don't want kids, that's also fine. If you're not sure, that's also fine. Like, just let everyone make their own choices with them and their doctor. That's my opinion. Um, obviously, in the zombie apocalypse, you don't really get a doctor in this case, but you know, it'll be all right. AJ's doodle! Okay, Ava, remember to get a doodle.
Thank you. You're welcome. Listen, it's dangerous out here, and right now, you're hurting.
You just took a kid off her! Give her a kid back!
Kept me going in the worst of times. You'll find yours. I know you will. Someone, or something. I used to have Lee, you never mentioned him. He took care of me for a while. Every time I would look at AJ, I could hear him in my head, helping me. Guiding me. He's still with you, you know? Here. So is AJ.
Also, one minute, just realised, they branded a kid! Cause she's a kid, they branded her. Did not not realise it before, and it just hit me now. Cause the, 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 New Frontier, they brand their members, Evy. Let's shake her hand. Yeah, this is bad place. Soon as we get out of here, the better, that's what I think.
You coming?
I still have to ask Lingard about AJ.
Oh, he's waking up, Brill. Just in time! Now we go out. Maybe.
Joan took him before I got out. I haven't seen him since.
That poor bastard. He's, he's not getting out.
They're gonna kill him?
Guess there's only one sure way to get away from Joan these days. If you think that, you don't know David.
So he stole someone else's kid?
David's the reason the kid's better off now than, than he's ever been. You can be as mad as you want.
Wonder no, what do you mean, no? Wonder no, what, no? Whoa, David did steal a kid, he stole Clem's kid! And that, that's not the definition of a good guy! Took responsibility, yeah, so that means like he raised him. It wasn't him, oh, what, so like what, David gave the kid to someone else? I don't understand either, Rue. I'm just seeing wonder knowing, I feel like I'm being told off, and I'm confused. Yous might have to explain it to all guys, so like, did David? Oh god, you'll see, okay, let's continue. Theft and kidnapping. David raised AJ, that's what I'm saying, I don't think it's a good idea! She has a point. Okay, next one. Hey, where's the boy? Yeah, exactly! Don't give up.
He got me to care about everything I'd given up on. My life. Other people. Even this goddamn place. Without him around. I don't wanna care anymore.
Maze?
Then you won't have any reason to do it.
Well, if we do it, then we can't be guaranteed, no. No.
I'm sorry, Clem, we can't do this.
No, I have to, if you won't, I will.
Clem, stop, he's not in his right mind, you can't do this.
Let go of me, I'm taking the deal.
We'll find AJ, just not this way.
There is no other way. Where is?
You can consider the deal.
No! Javi! How could you?
No, cause like that's just shows he did.
It's your funeral. Especially now. Now that Joan's rounding up all alleged traitors. You better hope she doesn't find you.
Hang in there, buddy.
Oh, hey.
That's why I was thinking of her.
Clementine?
Surprised to see you here. Yeah, right back at you. You all good?
Yeah, we're all set.
Let's roll.
Hmm, good to see you.
I'm so confused what's going on. I just feel like a lot of goo- not good stuff's happening.
Javi, you're back! And Clementine?
Thanks for the warm welcome.
Just surprised to see you is all.
Guys, this is Ava.
Oh yeah, I know who she is. She's got a hell of a punch.
Nice to meet you.
Good to see you, Ava.
A coup?
Oh, hell! You okay?
Yeah, it looks worse than it is, don't worry about it.
Yeah, she needs a rest, she has like a bullet wound to the stomach. You get a gun, and you get a gun.
No, I've already got one.
Oh.
Actually, it wouldn't hurt to have another.
I think he's got a crush on her.
We went to see Doctor Lingard.
At night? I'm kinda surprised he was sober. It's gotta be a stressful job.
Yeah, he was outfit.
He was definitely not a hundred percent there.
So cute. When you fancy a girl, give her a gun.
Why don't you go talk to Kate, okay?
Okay.
The sun will be rising in a few hours. Joan's people know we're holed up here, and they're gonna come looking for us, all of us.
They like your skills, Eleanor.
I know, I know, we're fucked, okay?
Oh, thanks for that, Javi.
Just stay in box.
Great. So, how do we do that?
We throw a party. Stipe! Just cause you put it, Phoenix, I'm going for it. Christ! You said it, Phoenix! Hey, I didn't choose violence, Phoenix chose violence. I just went with Phoenix's choice. He can spit in here, it, he can spit far.
Jesus, Javi, is that blood on your shirt?
Strawberry jam.
How the hell did this happen? Oh, you're bleeding right through that bandage.
Nothing happened.
Bleed a lot, besides, it's already taken care of.
Flesh wound.
You still didn't answer my question, what happened?
He got stabbed, okay, by one of the guards.
Thought you knew what you were doing.
You're still alive, aren't you?
Oh my god, Rumble, you, you just want more like Javi topless. Exactly, walk it off. So down, kid. Sorry about the laundry, cough, you are, Rumble.
Oh, this is bullshit! I'm not staying behind. He's my dad, I'm going.
Same, Evy. Cut the shit, kid. Exactly. Your life's not worth more, like, less than your dad's.
Back in the tunnel, when he came after us, he tried to bargain with you, but you thought killing him would be easier.
I saved your life too, in case you didn't remember that part.
So what? You shot him, you killed him!
What the fuck, Javi? Is she telling the truth? You murdered my friend? What the fuck did you do that for? You looked me in the eyes, man!
He's telling the truth. When Conrad found out that I used to run with New Frontier, he went crazy. He would have pulled the trigger, no question.
Exactly. Yeah, Gabe, fuck sake.
Well, maybe I'd be better off with Joan. At least I know she wants to stab me in the back. You get the fuck out, and you stay gone, or I can't be held accountable.
Trip, come on. Come on, you're in a pop ups, everyone's dying left, right and centre. No one's doing anything intentional.
We better go get that truck.
I mean, I don't blame Trip and Eleanor being angry, like, that was their friend and stuff, like, I totally get that, sensible. Made me wanna shave my head, to be fair, she rocks the shaved head, look, I would love to shave my head, to be fair. Nah. Think it'd be good, many reasons, but, yeah. Wait a minute, I love how they're so against. They're very against Gabe doing anything, but then you got Clem who's a kid the same age as him, and they're like, yeah, sure, go ahead. No, you're not, kid. Oh my god, this kid. Clem, bloody saves the day every time. Yeah, when Clem says something, it's not an attack. I didn't mind Clem, I didn't mind Gabe until this. Okay, this is a weak fence. Yep. Oh, zombies. No, thank you, zombie. Goodbye, I don't have any, uh, anything to give you, sorry. No, it's kind of a poor barrier. Bulldozer, let's have it. We're gonna shop in. Where'd they get the fuel from? Well, other people, obviously. Let's go. And let's go and cause trouble.
Ava?
Ava?
What are the chances?
I'd say about fifty fifty.
Fifty fifty. Nice! Call comes from us, I don't know why. I think, um, I think it was cause we were talking about it a lot, leaving Daylo, and so I might have confused you, sorry. She hasn't had twice in the past few years, how you recommend at least once, oh, I think when I move out, that'll be one thing I definitely will do. Just so I know, my dad is always against me shaving my head, which is fine, like, I'm not bothered. Hell, means make sure, that's fair as well, Phoenix, you gotta do what makes you feel comfortable. I love how they're not noticing this van just moving. But also at the moment, I'm enjoying dying my hair different colors a lot. So, yeah. I'm gonna keep the blue for a while, but I'm definitely gonna be trying, um, aubergine soon. That is also fair, Evy. I mean, probably. I mean, probably will. Cuz everyone knows how to hotwire. Dye your scalp if you shave it. Probably wouldn't be the best idea cuz my scalp was covered in psoriasis fox, so... Probably gives blood poisoning, which I don't want that much. But good idea. Ooh, what's in here? Whoa, what do we take? Let's just take everything. No, 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 no. Ooh. That's girly, but bad head. My hairdresser uses like a special formula or something box, so it's luckily not bad, actually. It's just we don't dye the roots that much. And they have naturally, like, dark roots anyhow. Only that jumpska got you prem? Every jumpska gets me. Right, how do people learn to hotwire cars? Genuine question, like, how do you just know, like, what to do it? Okay, so I gotta, like, do this one, I'm guessing? Okay, so...
Shit.
Uh, Easter? Let that be light. Aw, no. Zombies are like, "We wanna go for a drive too." "Let us come with you." Uh, Easter. Yeah, Javi, hurry up. God's sake, dude. Vroom. Just beep your horn, so they step aside. Yeah, that'll work. Zombies are definitely, like, courteous with the horn beeping. These zombies in the student sprint, yeah. Always get scared of them zombie films where you see zombies sprinting. Welcome. I want the brain flavor, I want flesh flavored ice cream. Zombies know their green crosscoats. Baby flavors. Aw, Phoenix, I'm sorry. Bring the food with you, or bring me with the food. No one will mind. I'll say hi to your family. Be like, "Hi, Phoenix's family. Enjoy your lunch." No prem. They're just friends. They're just friends. Rumble does not want them kissing. Oh, they definitely, yeah. Some friends flirt with each other, though. Nah, I'm just gonna leave it. Yeah, but Clem is bad.
It's so normal, you know? Like, as crazy as things get, as terrible and tragic and just plain stupid, there's nothing more wonderfully ordinary as two kids falling for each other. Not that they're there yet, but to feel something that intensely for another person, kinda like the best drug there is. Well, one of the best drugs.
Right. But you're presuming Clem's gonna fall for him as well. Say that about Javi. It's not happening, Prem.
All the wishing in the world isn't gonna change what the world is now. Nobody gets to be a kid anymore. Hell, you're lucky if you get to grow up.
You're right.
He's got one. Best friends. Yes, childhood gift, the childhood during the apocalypse. Can't exactly go to the park, can ya? Yeah. Yeah. Someone who's not David. We're best friends for life? Very much best friends, yes. Moments of being best friends only. That's the weather. That's malnutrition. But they're always been meant as friendship. We're best friends. Best friends. Yes, best friendship ever. No. We're best friends. As best friends? Oh shit.
I just can't see it between us.
We, we, we're friends. Best friends. We're best friends. Best friends. Best friends. Thank you, Rue. Grab the popcorn. That was such morbid, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Sorry. I've just accepted I'm a horrible per- I've told you all this for years now, I'm a horrible person. I've never saw myself as a good person. I'll give you space. Best friend. Best friend. Best friend? Bit more. I have a really dark sense of humor. Comes out a lot at the moment. See ya, best friend. The way you... Thank you, Bane. I had no idea. I didn't do anything. Also, this is only episode four, and this feels like we're coming...
Maybe.
I don't know, Phoenix. Let's go, yes. And this ends here. He's repeated back. It's a very stressful game, Rue. Very dark, like, I just haven't really, like, my, I found this out in my course, a lot of us have a very dark sense of humor, which is probably why I love it. Cuz some of the stuff will come out with, it's like, whoa, that was, that, that went morbid. Let's go further. Ooh, what's it about, Prem? Is no one questioning this? No problem, oh, Phoenix? Those are cool. Oh, we're back to the, oh! I thought Phoenix meant like eighteen hundred, like, as in the time. Cardi little budget hospital show from the eighties. Ooh, Prem, do exclamation marks suggest? And I'll check it out. Oh, fuck.
If you knew what we were coming here to do, why go ahead with this? Why put a noose around my brother's neck?
But she's putting herself...
David wanted to tear this whole place down. He told his people where to find our gun supply, and sure enough, they picked us clean. You really thought you could ride into town and stage a coup? With our own damn weapons? Something like that? I can't just let it go. You've put me in a no-win situation here.
Even him, he's like, "What the fuck?" What? Stop playing games. Yeah, exactly. Alright, I choose no one. I choose no one. What? I, I don't know who to pick. I don't know who to pick. Because I like Trip, and I like Ava, and there's a time bar. See if it goes down. I might do that, Phoenix. Because I don't want, because you shouldn't pick. Yeah, it's so fact, like, fuck it, I'm not picking any. That can go down. There ya go. Yeah. Oh, I'm praying. What? No. What? Oh, Christ, okay. I don't know who to pick, guys, then. So it's either Trip or Ava. I like both of them. Like, if we save Trip, will I bring Eleanor back on our side and we can sort stuff out? Or if we save Ava, like, she, like, was ex-military, right? So she might be able to take control more of the situation? I don't know what to do, what... Yeah. Oh, I just don't know. I'm leaning towards Ava cuz I'm think, saving Ava, cuz I'm thinking, like, cuz they may appoint and start being like, she's ex-military. And like, she's like the lieutenant, so maybe it's like she has, like, at the upper hand or something like that, I don't know. Yo, I could always play these games again. I, I don't know why I get so worked up over what to do, cuz we could just play them again. Cuz what, what, what fuck could Eva weigh? Like, it's not like Eva of the game is a good option. So, yeah, I think I'm gonna save Eleanor. Yeah, I think I'm gonna save Ava.
Not after what they tried to do. You may be guilty of bringing them into this, but they chose to go along with it. So ready to sacrifice yourself for others. Don't worry, Javi. I'm not through with you yet.
Well, we tried the other option. It really does. Okay, we're gonna save Ava, and if we play through this game again, we'll save Trip next time.
Such language. But I admire the sacrifice you're making here, Javi. Shoot her.
Joan, think about what you're doing. Ava's one of us. You can't fucking do this.
I can do anything I want. You brought this on yourself. Do it.
Wait! No!
Oh my god, they really shot her.
Now, David, it's your turn.
I can't believe this! This isn't how we do things! This is madness! Stop her, Clint! Is this the process you trusted?
She's breathing dead. I want to shoot, but I want to say the deal! It's because of Dave for making this mouth go. Oh, yours are all the same pew. Oh, 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 I can't move, I can't move, okay. I can't just sit and watch, I forgot, oh shit! Oh, death. So much death. Okay, well, gotta move up, and then move to the side. Someone else got killed. Someone else got killed! Christ, Javi. And then Ava. Okay, and then... Oh, David, god's sake. You're bringing your kid involved? You say that, kid, you stay. Oh, this is too high tense for me. Oh, look at Clem, really going for it, lass. Oh, thanks, Trip! Yeah, to be fair, we shouldn't. Oh, no. Throwback? So, this is going well. This is going so well! Yeah, we should have took the deal, shouldn't we? Should have took the deal. To be fair, though, out of all the seasons I played, this is the season what makes me wanna, like, go back and try, like, different stuff. Shit! Best friend! Not you, best friend! I'm a best friend! What, Rumble was in that car, Prem? Aw, no. Okay. Nice, 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 uh, this, this, this went well, thicker than water, nice, uh... Nothing, nothing bad at all, this was a, this was a nice... This was a nice episode, so let's look at the stats, everyone! Okay. Do we get to see what happens? You will, next week, Prem. Because, uh... I'll be streaming this, and the final episode of Walking Dead on Wednesday next week.